Welcome to the 7:30 meeting of Lynchburg City Council for today, June 25th. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Perro, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bear your hoods. We come tonight, oh God, recognizing what an honor it is to serve this community by representing our citizens on city council. We are reminded of our need for wisdom and clarity of mind as we consider an act on the business that is before us. Therefore, we seek your wisdom on high and ask as we give our full attention to each agenda item and to those that speak to us in these chambers, that your spirit lead our decisions. May the outcome of this meeting be a blessing to our city and bring glory unto you. In the name above all names, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public hearing, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. I'll just make a note that Item B was added this morning. You may want to note that before...yeah. So for you all to know that it was added this morning, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. May I have a motion on the consent agenda? Okay.
It may be pulled to be then separate.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make a motion for A.
All right. A motion has been made for consideration of A, the minutes from May 28, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
And I know we normally say anything, don't say anything here, but I do have to say something. I greatly appreciate our minutes. I mean, it was, it was nice to see compared to some of the ones that we've had over the years. It's probably a little verbose, but it's fabulous to be able to see what happened. So, thank you.
You're here.
Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, six with one absent. And do I have a motion for consideration of adopting Resolution B?
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motions were made in second. Is there a discussion?
Where is it? I didn't see it.
I don't know what this is.
This is what we had last time. We carried it over because of the...
I know what it is, but there's nothing that's attached with it.
Hold on.
I mean, the little thing on here, that's the...
I'm not going to vote for what I don't know what it is.
It's the second reading of what you approved two weeks ago.
So it's got a little asterisk by it.
That is referenced in the minutes.
Okay.
So two weeks...
This is where you...
Councilmember Perro was not here, but everyone else was. Yes, go right ahead.
In the past process, past, if it's the second reading, it's got a little asterisk by it. It lets us know it's the second reading. This does not necessarily have an asterisk by it, and therefore, it's a little hard for me to know that this is the second reading. So if it is the second reading, I'll be happy to support it, if council had supported previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Nelson.
Clarification, I'm not, I'm not positive, but my thoughts were that this came before us before, and I questioned whether or not the sentiments of CDAC had been reflected in approving this. Understood, it was not necessary to have the CDAC committee address this, but inasmuch as there were programs that we denied funding to when CDAC made its report, I felt like we ought to have a second view and give the public an opportunity to voice this. And certainly, we didn't have two councilmembers here that particular night. But I wasn't under the impression that was the first reading. I thought we just tabled it until this meeting. Am I wrong?
I might have gotten it wrong, certainly. My understanding was that when we came back to you with the additional $200,000 that I had recommended be allocated to affordable housing, but we didn't have any specificity around that. Council wanted us to bring that back for you to consider using that for the police department as well. And I thought that's when you wanted CDAC to be notified on the second, for that second $200,000, so...
Substitute motion to move this to general business.
True.
Madam Mayor, may I offer a substitute motion to move this to general business for consideration at that time?
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Do you want to cast a vote to move it to general business? All right? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember, go right ahead. Say what you were getting ready to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now's the time, now's the main motion. We just need to vote it one more time.
Right. Okay, thank you. So, thank you to move it to general business. Thank you. All right, and the motion passes, six with one absent. Thank you. All right, next is the public hearing, which includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to counsel for deliberation. First is the public hearing to receive comments regarding the fiscal year 2020 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home programs. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, oh, sorry, she's not here, and members of city council.
It's just normal. There you go.
Messed up already. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the city, as an entitlement city, for the receipt of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Funds to prepare and submit an annual action plan within the 2015-2025-year consolidated plan. This plan outlines the needs, goals, and objectives for community development, including housing and non-housing goals. The Grants Administration staff has prepared the fiscal year 2020 plan, and it includes all of the required components and the recommended CDBG and home projects approved by city council at the public hearing conducted on May 14th. A public notice was published stating that a draft of the proposed fiscal year 2020 annual action plan was available for public review and comment. The public comment period began on May 24th and ends at the conclusion of the public hearing tonight. Prior to this meeting, I have not received any comments regarding the plan. Any comments received tonight by council will be incorporated into the plan and submitted to HUD.
Thank you. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Perro.
Madam Mayor, I move the resolution to approve the annual action plan and submit to HUD.
All right, the motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Perro or Nelson? All right. Councilmember Hugelson?
I think Councilmember Nelson is the chairman of the...
Yes, I am.
Anything you want to share with us?
No, I think this came back preliminarily about a month and a half ago. It was the unanimous decision of the CDAC committee to approve those allocations that were in the report. There were some, unfortunately, that we did not fund, but the funding did come through differently from what we knew when we first met. I think that I do want to applaud staff, Ms. Walker and her staff, for their excellent research and presentation of the information to all the committee and mustering of the community resources to share their ideas and needs.
Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, six to one absent. Thank you. Next is the public hearing to receive public input on a proposed negotiated cable franchise agreement between the City of Lynchburg and Shenandoah Cable Television, LLC, doing business as Chantel. The proposed franchise agreement would allow Chantel to operate a cable television franchise within the City of Lynchburg. The proposed franchise agreement establishes the rights, obligations, and privileges of the parties to the agreement, the City of Lynchburg and Chantel. The proposed franchise is for a period of 15 years. The public hearing is being held pursuant to the procedures established in Section 15 dot 2 dash 2108 dot 21 F of the Code of Virginia, and the public hearing shall be limited to the proposed franchise agreement with Chantel. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests, and this is Mr. Getz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As noted in the agenda, the item before you is to consider a request from Chantel to obtain a cable television franchise to provide cable television service in the City of Lynchburg. Earlier this spring, Chantel approached city staff requesting to negotiate the cable television franchise, and following the prescribed process, city staff has developed a draft franchise agreement for consideration. This agreement has been made available to the public and publicly advertised, made available for the last two weeks for public review. This franchise agreement was modeled after existing franchise agreements that currently exist with Comcast and Segra, which is formerly known as Lumos Networks. Those two companies are already franchised to do business, cable television business in the city. And trying to maintain a level playing field as we are required to do under law, we have crafted this negotiated franchise with Chantel to model those two existing franchises as much as possible. We have with us tonight a representative from Chantel, and I'd like to invite him to the podium, if I may, to describe in a little more detail what they envision to do in the city. His name is Mr. Chris Kyle. He's the Vice President of Industry Affairs and Regulatory for Chantel.
(inaudible) Sorry, no, I'm...
Let me help him navigate.
Mayor Tweedy, city council, and city leaderships, thank you. We are requesting a non-exclusive video franchise tonight, but make no mistake about that, this is in regards to a very large and extensive telecommunications project we have planned that will involve a residential broadband offering across the city. So the regulatory reasons, we want to offer video as part of that offering, it's a triple play, and the regulatory reasons why we need to apply for this video franchise. And I'll talk a little bit more about this residential internet project that we're going to be constructing here in the City of Lynchburg. We're very, very excited. I thought it might be helpful to just give a short background on Chantel. I don't know how many of you know who we are or what we're doing. We're already here in Lynchburg, but we're headquartered just north, about an hour and a half, two hours north, in a small town called Edinburgh, Virginia. We're publicly traded. We were started by, you know, a small community that just wanted advanced telecommunications services 116 years ago, and that's what we've been doing ever since. Our strategy is pretty simple. We build great networks. We're going to talk about one of those tonight. We provide excellent customer service, and we partner with the local communities we serve. We have a long-term perspective. We know and we've seen this, the better you do as a community, the better we're going to do. It's a pretty simple strategy. We are here today as a wireless operator. We have a fiber network that already runs through the City of Lynchburg. If you're a Sprint customer, you're one of our customers. We bought Intellos two years ago. We fully upgraded that network. That made us the sixth-largest wireless provider, to give you some perspective of who we are. We've got 1,000 team members, and we do over 600 million in annual revenues. We think that's important to understand, the partner you have here in Chantel. This is a network map. You can see all the other places that we are at. We have over 5,700 miles of this fiber, this most advanced technology that we're going to bring to the residential community here in Lynchburg City. We're calling this the Gigabit City Project. This fiber that we're going to connect to every house and every business, or the majority of them here in the city, will deliver our triple play, internet, video, and phone. It is the fastest mechanism for delivering internet speeds today. It is future-proof. It delivers the gigabit speeds that everybody wants and talks about, that are important for economic development, that are important for your university communities, your educational communities, that are important for companies looking to relocate here, or people looking to work from home. This is the technology that will allow people to pull down very large files, but also push up the files to the internet to upload them as part of, as part of their work, as part of their education. We've already started. As I talked about, we have existing fiber facilities throughout the city. We are touching now close to 1,000 businesses. Some of the customers that we have here are Lynchburg City Schools, Lynchburg University, people like that. What we're going to do is continue to extend off of that network. So tonight, we're asking for approval of this non-exclusive cable franchise. We are going to continue to coordinate with Public Works and the power company that's here. We have been active, actively engaged in engineering and construction, engineering and permitting. Construction will kick off here toward, as we get closer to year end, and be full steam ahead into next year. We want to have the majority of this project, or the first phase of this project wrapped up by year end 2022. It will bring local jobs here, both sales and marketing, and there will be, once we have a market launch here, there will be a significant community engagement piece to That was the extent of my presentation. If there are any questions?
Thank you. I tell you, if we do have any questions, we will call you back up.
Well, we look forward to coming back, maybe, and reporting on our progress. Thank you very much for your support.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kyle. Next part of our public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, no rebuttal is needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Perro?
Madam Mayor, I move the ordinance, please.
There is a motion in second, that the ordinance be moved. Is there further discussion?
I just wholeheartedly endorse this. This is fantastic. Thank you so much for coming to Lynchburg. We have been subject to monopoly for a very long time, and I look forward to some competition in the area. This has been a focus of mine for the past 10 years, and I'm just happy to have you here. It's been very difficult. Thank you, Mr. Getz, for your work, and you and I have talked about this many times, and thank you for your work in, in developing this relationship, and I wish Chantel all the success in the area, and I just, our role is to provide a level playing field that promotes the best access we can possibly promote for our citizens. So thank you for being here, and we look forward to the success you'll bring. As soon as you can come downtown, I know you're, you're concentrating on the Rivermont and the Memorial Avenue areas, as soon as you can come downtown, I will be a customer. Thank you so much, sir.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just second what the other councilmember said. We're grateful to have you here, grateful for the competition. Hopefully, that'll drive down costs for our citizens, improve services, so I think this is going, this is a great thing for Lynchburg, and we're glad to have you. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugelson?
I just got a question, I guess, from Mike. You know, and I appreciate what Councilmember Perro said about the competition, and is this, I guess, a level playing field? You know, wouldn't we, wouldn't we allow for franchises to come in? Is that...
Correct. We have, as was mentioned, a requirement to have a non-exclusive franchise, so we can have as many companies as we, as council, agrees to have in the city. The terms and conditions in the franchise need to be the same, so things like customer service standards, penalties for missed commitments, liquidated damages, all of those parameters are the same. So the operating conditions, we need to make those level. And I should note, too, that the existing franchise holders, Lumos, Segra, and Comcast, have the ability, under law, to review the accepted franchise with Chantel, and if they see anything in there that they think is not comparable, they have the right to come back to council and ask for their franchise to be modified. So they have some relief there if they think there's something inequitable.
Yeah, I remember, I've been on council for quite a while, and I remember hearing years ago with the old Adelphia, and just people would say, "You have got to do something." It's like, well, we have very limited, and obviously, when we approve a franchise, still have very little input in it, and it's a 15-year franchise, so hopefully, the competition will help all of them to rise a little higher. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes, just a little clarification. So the agreement, this current agreement, is it similar to the prior agreements that the other agencies received, or...
Yes, there are two existing agreements right now, one with Comcast, and that system has been in the city for decades. It's been owned by Adelphia and companies prior to Adelphia under different names, so they are often referred to as the incumbent. Lumos obtained a cable franchise, I'm going to say in roughly 2004, 2005, please don't hope, no, I think it might be 2007, excuse me, 2007, and they, too, have the ability to provide service in Lynchburg. The one distinction that I will note is how the service area is described. The incumbent Comcast has an obligation to provide service where certain density levels are met. That's just legacy because of how they grew in the city, being the incumbent, that's just the way it developed over time. The Segra-Lumos contract or franchise agreement does not have that density requirement. This proposed Chantel agreement does not have that density requirement, but they will be licensed to provide service in the city, and as you heard Mr. Kyle say, hopefully in a large part of the city. Thank you.
All right, and thank, yes, and I think either you or Mr. Kyle, because I heard Councilmember Perro say, right now, it would just be in the Rivermont area in the middle of the city for people to understand.
Yes, and I'll, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I will describe, what's in your council report is a map, and that's available for public view. There are two initial build-out areas that Chantel has proposed, and they're roughly ovals in the Rivermont area, and I would call it the more Fort Avenue kind of area. Those are initial build-outs, as I understand it, and as their engineering design progresses, they will map out how to expand that system into other parts of the city.
So that would address that density issue, or at least...
Well, there will not be a legal requirement or requirement in the franchise to provide service if a certain number of houses exist in a, what's called a street mile. There will not be that legal or franchise requirement, but if the business conditions are right, they will move that, that service.
Their goal to, and you said it was your goal to expand out across the city. All right, Councilmember Perro, thank you for that.
Do I remember correctly that we removed that density requirement several years ago in the hope of bringing up, bringing some more competition into the city?
You're remembering correctly. When the Lumos franchise was adopted, it's actually been amended, and one of the amendments was to expand their franchise area into the entire city, and when council approved that, they did not include the density requirement, and that was one of the drivers, was to incentivize the company to provide service where they could financially feasible. So, and that, you're seeing that in other cities around the country where we have competitive providers come in. It's almost impossible to expect a second company to come in and build an entire city out and meet the same density requirement as an incumbent.
Which was the barrier to competition. So removing that barrier enabled, opened the door to competition coming in, and Chantel is obviously willing to make the investment in the city. They've picked out the areas that they deem are the right density and have the revenue goals that they're trying to attain, and they'll build out in those areas, and then I certainly hope to see that spread further.
And if I may be so bold, I need to put a plug in for Comcast, because they have made a significant investment in the city. As you know, they've opened up a very nice retail store out on Ward's Road. One of the many, I get, I get the calls from citizens when they aren't happy with cable service, and one of the calls I frequently got was, "We have nowhere to go to talk about our account." So Comcast has invested in the city. They see promise here. Obviously, we're growing, and now Chantel sees it, too. So I think this is very optimistic news for the citizens, and I will say, hopefully, Comcast will continue to be an active provider here, and we'll see true competition.
Mr. Getz, thank you for pitching Comcast, but I am very unhappy with my cable service. I am paying way too much for what I'm getting, and, and I really do appreciate the competition.
Point taken.
Thank you, sir.
I, I'm sorry, if no one else has a question. I do have one on some of those addresses that we talked about that are on the outskirts of this, I mean, at the edge of the city. I know there have been one or two citizens who have complained and/or sent me notices. I forwarded them to you.
Yes.
Will this in the future help them, or are we just looking, are they looking at something else different? And these are specific addresses, councilmembers, that are on the edge.
I am sure optimistic that it will help. The question is, how long will it take? And it's really driven by economics, is when is the business case there for the cable provider? Some of the areas you're talking about, there might only be five or six homes within a half a mile or something like that. So as homes are developed in those areas, hopefully, the providers will expand their services out to there and provide the level of service that they're looking for.
Okay. Councilmember Hugelson?
People can add in different areas the satellite, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And wireless cellular-based broadband now is, is growing. You've heard of 5G. We might see that one day. So we're seeing the fruits of technology improvements and competition.
And that doesn't require the wires to go there, so...
It requires some wires to a point to broadcast, but nowhere near what we're talking about now to have, actually, have a fiber put into your home.
Okay, because that explains, because I, I had that thought about, there are some companies I know, like out in the Bedford County Forest area, where it's like, I don't know if it's like HughesNet or somewhere that...
HughesNet.
So would that be an option for those addresses that are out there that right now are not connected?
It is an option. My personal opinion is the more practical option is a cellular-based. You've heard of LTE?
Okay.
We have many cellular providers in the city that provide faster speeds. They're not as fast as a wire into your home, and they're probably cheaper than a satellite connection that you might find in a really rural area, like with a Hughes company, a HughesNet.
Okay.
But, yes. So wireless is an option.
Well, thank you. I just wanted the public, the viewing public, to hear all of that conversation, because I know you get the complaints, and I've had a couple myself, so I wanted them, when they read this in the morning, I wanted them to know we asked all the questions needed.
One other thing, if I may add, too. I know, I know Mr. Getz had mentioned that Comcast upgraded with the area, but they've also upgraded to be, because I've been with DirecTV for a long time, and I liked all the ability to scroll and see and record and have the DVRs and all those things. And apparently Comcast has now upgraded their service to do that, and that's the beauty of, as you mentioned, competition. I mean, you have competition, they do better services, and hopefully, our citizens win.
Great.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, six with one absent. Public hearing, next is the public hearing regarding the petition of the Rebkey Company to vacate 92,000ths of an acre portion of Jackson Street. The area proposed for the vacation has a small portion of a parking lot on it, concrete steps, and a stone curb. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and I believe this is Ms. Glasgow.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The Rebkey Company is petitioning to vacate a portion of Jackson Street for use of off-street parking as part of the Grace Lodge development. The vacation would apply to approximately 92,000ths acres and is currently occupied by a parking lot that is encroaching into the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else here to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Ed Willman. I'm here on behalf of Rebkey Company. We conducted the survey for Rebkey on the vacation of the street, and the premise behind the vacation is if, if the street were not to be vacated, Rebkey would be required to remove the improvements from the city right-of-way. Their wish is to use the existing improvements, vacate a portion of the right-of-way, therefore not having to, to, to do that kind of work.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in op... Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, no rebuttal is needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council, and I will turn to our Chair of the Physical Development Committee, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Physical Development Committee did review this this morning, and Mr. Willman's presentation discussed the, the encroachment itself. This is a historic encroachment. I mean, the Gray's Lodge has been there as long as I can remember. It does not impede on either, either the traffic or the parking on Jackson Street. So it's really just a paper street through that area. That being said, it's about a $16,000 value. That value is not included in our current city tax assessment by, by vacating the property. That value will be included in our tax assessment, be able to recoup some revenue from that encroachment over time. So with that in consideration, the Physical Development Committee did move and recommend to council to, to, to recommend this, to abandon this, sorry, that was the wrong term, to, to, excuse me, thank you, to vacate the right-of-way in this area. The value, like I said, was $16,000. That will be now placed on the tax roll where it wasn't in the past, and this will also help the long-term development of the Gray Street Lodge, which will hopefully be a long-term revenue-producing asset for the private owners and therefore for the, for the city. So, Madam Mayor, that is the motion on behalf of the committee.
Thank you. There is no second needed. Is there any further discussion regarding the vacation? All right, if not, I would ask you to please cast your vote. And the motion passes, six with one absence. Thank you very much. Next is the general business, and this section includes general items of new business. Number eight is continuation of the discussion of the petition of Josh Lee Trout Spring to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and to rezone approximately 5.91 acres located at 1306 Laxton Road from R1, low-density residential to R3C, medium-density residential conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the development of the property as 40 townhomes. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Martin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this proposal would require three separate actions from council. As you mentioned in your opening remarks, the first being a future land use map amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential, the rezoning from R1, low-density residential to R3, medium-density residential conditional, and the conditional use permit to allow the construction of a townhome development on 5.9 acres. An additional 1.8 acres of, 1.18 acres of land is located in Campbell County and indicated as common area. To address concerns discussed previously by council, the petitioner has reduced the number of townhomes from 50 to 40. This results in a unit density of 6.8 units per acre. This is above the existing land use designation of low-density residential, four units per acre, but well below the 12 units per acre that is requested for the medium-density Flume Amendment. The reduction of units also allows the addition of an additional means of ingress and egress to the development from Enterprise Drive. That was also discussed previously by council. It is important to, it is important to note, though, that this access was not a part of the original traffic analysis, and will have to be approved by the city engineer in determining if additional turn lanes are going to be warranted on Enterprise. Other access to development is proposed via private drive from Laxton Road. An analysis of this access has been reviewed previously by the Virginia Department of Transportation. The analysis indicates that a left-turn lane from Laxton Road into the development would be required. While not required, a right-turn lane taper from Laxton Road is proposed to the entrance drive. VDOT has previously indicated that this analysis was acceptable to them, but not yet approved. The petitioner has also added additional buffering to address concerns that were raised previously by the Planning Commission. These petitions were previously discussed by council on December 11th and June 11th after public hearings entabled until this, this evening. Also, it is important to point out that when this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, it was ultimately recommended for denial, but that was prior to seeing any of these amendments to the concept plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there a motion to further the discussion? And cast your vote to adopt the resolution for the future land use map amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential? Councilmember Perro?
I don't think I'm ready to make a motion. If that's all right, I would, would like to ask a couple of questions. Mr. Martin, you said that this is subject to the city and, and the review of the traffic, the Enterprise Drive location. Would you expound on that, please?
Well, when the original traffic analysis was submitted, it did not include this entrance drive to Enterprise Drive. That was added after concerns that were raised at council. So the city engineer has not seen a revised traffic analysis to determine if any turn lanes to that entrance would be necessary. I did speak with Mr. Newland about this. His concern is that possibly a left-turn lane from Enterprise Drive in this area may be needed in order to get traffic through the median. That's something that there would be approved at a site plan level if council chooses to approve this.
So would, I know, if, if council was to, was to choose to approve this, would that be a conditional factor, or do we need to do anything in a motion to?
I believe the city engineer could require the, the turn lanes if necessary based on a traffic analysis.
So it'd be purely a technical matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've received a number of emails about, about this, about concerns about density, about concerns about traffic, specifically traffic. I'm hearing that traffic is backing up significantly on Enterprise Drive. Traffic is backing up on, on Laxton Road, and then I hear about basically cut-through traffic on Enterprise Drive. I've heard since day one complaints about the crosswalks on Enterprise Drive and how, how the crosswalks have settled over time, and especially the trucks that may cut through from Timberlake Road will bounce across the crosswalks going at excessive speed and, and be very disruptive. Vehicles do travel at excessive speeds through that because it's a four-lane road. It's a really nice road. It is a four-lane road. It can convey a significant amount of traffic along it, which is both a, you know, a benefit and a curse. As we've learned through various studies, as we've learned through the downtown parking plan, and Windhurst was designed to be similar to a downtown in a suburban setting. As we've learned, that if you reduce traffic flow, it is actually effective in traffic calming. In this case, you've got a very straight shot, four-lane road, which is conducive to excessive speeds. And we need to do, as a, Madam Manager, as a, as a, as a city, we need to do a better job of enforcing the speeds and making sure that the crosswalks are maintained in such a way, or if need be, replaced, so that they do not provide basically an audible speed bump going across it. But I think the preference to everybody that I've talked to throughout this area is slow the traffic down. So, I've heard complaints about this intersection is increasing the traffic. The conundrum is that if you, if you increase traffic through the area, it does slow it down, and people will tend to move around the traffic and not go on that road. If you make it more effective and efficient to travel through it, you will have more traffic gravitating to the area. From my experience as a professional engineer, the number of apartment, excuse me, the number of townhomes that are planned here is not a substantial or meaningful impact to the overall traffic. Mr. Martin, remind me of the overall count again?
It'd be 40 units, which is 6.8 units per acre.
6.8 units per acre, and the Flume Amendment allows for 12.
Correct, but this is a conditional use permit and a conditional rezoning, so it would be tied to 40 units.
That's correct, and so it's been reduced down. The original submission was how many units per acre?
50. It was 50 units, so that's right around eight, eight some. I didn't calculate that.
Eight, so it's been, it's, but in effect, the unit count has been reduced.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right. And one of the other concerns was the proximity to the, to the Windhurst neighborhood. And we've got 200-plus feet of buffer there, plus additional tree line, it looks like. If I remember, I scaled this a while ago. 100 feet is about two inches on that drawing, so maybe 100 feet of buffer. Is that about right, sir?
It's close to 160 to 200 feet, I would say.
From the Windhurst development over?
To the nearest townhome, yes, sir.
Yes, and they'll be tighter than that on the...
This would be...
On the south side.
You can't see me pointing to it with my finger, but you can, this would be the closest point to the Windhurst.
And that's how many feet?
I would, just looking at the scale, I would say that's about 160 or so feet if you look at the scale here, maybe more.
Got it. And, but then the tightest resident is the one to these, on the page south. Those three, those three developments. So they're the ones that are closest, and there's additional screening. So we've got lower density, we've got additional screening, we've got additional insurance, which are, which is everything that I asked for in the initial, in the initial development. In addition to that, and Madam Secretary, Madam Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, VDOT is pursuing a study on Timberlake Road to improve the traffic flow and conditions on Timberlake Road right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we've been working with Campbell County on, on that. Campbell County obviously is on, has control of Laxton Road. If I remember correctly, the, the interchanges they're studying are basically from the intersection of 460 all the way to Heritage High School on, on Leedsville and, and Richland Hills. So that, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I recall, then that is a study that the NPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization in Region 2000 is conducting with, with VDOT to improve the traffic flow and signalization through that area, which should be a pretty good improvement. That's not going to affect Laxton Road except for the out, the, the movement out there. The reason I did not support this, or asked this, reconsidered the last time, was because it had a sole entrance on Laxton Road. Laxton Road is outside of the area of the city's influence. It's in Campbell County. Just up the street, Enterprise Drive and Paulette Circle had an interchange that was, by metrics, showed that it, it would work very well, but in practice, it worked very, very poorly. And because it was in the city, we were able to do something about it. That intersection on Laxton Road, we could not do anything about, even though our constituents, the people that live in, our citizens in the city of Lynchburg may complain, we would be powerless, which is why I asked for the, for the entrance on Enterprise Drive. That way, if there is a problem with traffic, we may, may be able to help out in the future. I've always based my decisions on principle and, and commitment to, to my word. This is a difficult decision for me because I've heard of a lot of complaints against doing this development, but the developer has done everything that I asked, specifically the entrance to Enterprise Drive, the reduction of the number of units, as well as the increasing of the barrier. And because of that, I'm willing to support this development as it's been redefined. When you compromise and you work through solutions, nobody gets exactly what they want. We need to look at our best possible uses for our landlocked city. If we're gonna work to keep our taxes low, we need to make sure that we have the ability to grow the city where need be. This is basically an unused parcel. It's almost an undeveloped, undevelopable parcel because of the connection and the tie on Campbell Avenue, excuse me, on, through Campbell County to Laxton Road. With the connection on Enterprise, and the developer has worked out a way to come through Campbell Avenue, it is working. It's not, it would not, it is not what I would prefer to see there, but it could be nothing at all, or in the future, it could be a whole lot worse. I think this is a suitable compromise that makes appropriate use of the land and respects the citizens around it. And so, Madam Mayor, therefore, I'm gonna move Resolution A, which is to change the future land use map, understanding the conditions that, that Mr. Martin's put on it.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Wilder had something, and because you seconded it, do you have discussion around it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, I think Councilmember Perro has done an extraordinary job of summarizing all of my concerns, and I'm not gonna try to repeat them.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
I would agree the same, again, because the developer has reduced the number of units, and also he has taken into consideration all the comments from city council members. That's why I'm going to also approve the motion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hagelson?
Madam Mayor, you know, I kind of, as we said a few meetings ago, and as Mr. Martin stated, you know, this first item is the future land use map. The future land use map is low-density. The change would make it medium-density. It would go from a maximum of four units per acre, and this one actually goes to 6.8, which is actually a 70% increase in density over the maximum that is allowed there now. You know, years ago, when, when Windhurst was first proposed and developed, I was on the Planning Commission at the time, and as they pulled out the traditional neighborhood development, they talked about the certain areas, and with that, they had areas that were high-density and areas that were single-family. Right next to it is the single-family, and I'm not gonna support the change from low-density to medium-density because it abuts right up next to single-family. You know, I recognize there's a buffer there, but that buffer, I mean, there's lots of people that have single-family homes in the back that kind of were under the assumption that this is gonna be still single-family because the future land use map says it, the zoning says it, and this hasn't been changed just because somebody wants to make a change. I can appreciate what the developer's doing, but what we're doing is changing the density ability from low-density to medium-density. It's a 70% increase in the amount of homes that could be in this area, and with all that traffic that is flowing up and down on Timberlake and Laxton, I appreciate the roads that are, are working, but there's some, some serious bottlenecks that happen, and so I'm not, I think we've had enough development out in the Timberlake Road area, enough apartments, enough townhomes. I think it's time to kind of give it a rest and, and let the single-family homes thrive.
Thank you, Councilmember Hagelson. Councilmember Wilder?
Just a question. Aren't there townhouses across the street from the development?
Yes, sir, they are, and they're at a density of about 8.7 units per acre.
Okay, all right, thank you, S. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I will also be supporting the development for a handful of reasons, many of which have been stated, but there are a couple others, I think, that sort of bear discussing, one of which is that the city frankly needs more housing units, especially mid-market, which I believe that these would be priced in sort of the mid-market range. And so I'm, I'm struggling to understand, as others have mentioned, you know, based on the size and location of the lot, really what else would go here if not a medium-density development? Now, a developer could come in and put in single-family homes, but there's no guarantee that that would happen, and even if it did, that it would be done in a way that would meet with the neighbor's approval, right, because then they would, by right, be able to develop it in such a way that at least would not be according to a plan that we have all agreed to. I don't think that a townhome development on the property is, is out of keeping. As Councilmember Wilder just clarified, there's a townhome directly across the street. Windhurst is right down the road, and I'd also note that the developer has been responding. And I'd also note that the developer has been responsive, as Councilmember Perro noted, to council concerns and neighbor concerns. And I'm also, of course, I agree that traffic is sort of the delimiter here, and so obviously, it's dependent upon what the official VDOT study comes back with. Obviously, I think this is a really hard one, because a number of neighbors, some of whom have joined us here tonight, have very real and legitimate concerns. They don't want their neighborhood to change, a neighborhood that they have invested in for years. And it doesn't help, as, as another council member mentioned, that apartment and townhome complexes have been popping up on this side of town, all over the place. And so that's a lot of change for the community to bear, and there's no question about it. Our community is changing, though. It's growing, and we need more housing stock to accommodate all the folks who live here and are going to be living here. We just don't have enough of it. This is an underdeveloped lot on a stretch of road that's unlikely to see development of single-family homes. It's directly across the street from another townhome development and adjacent to commercially zoned property in the county. I think adjusting the flume to accommodate higher density makes sense. Because on balance, taking all the stakeholders into consideration, I think it's probably in the best interest of the community. But it's a hard one. It's a hard one, but I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I am the last to discuss. And it is a hard one, as you said, because you have, we have listened to the neighbors and to those who, who oppose it coming in. This is a different area of town, because it's mixed with the townhomes, it's mixed with apartments, it's mixed with single-family homes. The traffic is an issue, but then the developer has been responsive. So for all of the reasons that are, have been stated, I will be supporting the project. But it is, it's been a difficult decision because of how we would like to see more development occur as far as single-family homes. But again, this is not a lot that, a lot could be done with it to make it feasible for a developer. So I will be supporting the project, and for those reasons, all of which were listed above. Councilmember Perro?
Madam Mayor, just to be clear, this is Resolution B that I'm supporting. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Okay, for the...
A resolution amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for a certain area that allows the development. Resolution A is a denial.
Okay, yes, okay, motion, okay, got you. Okay, no, say that again. You said you are...
Resolution B is for approval, Resolution A is for denial. So Revolution, Resolution B is approval of the future land use map. Resolution C is the ordinance to, to make the zoning change.
Okay, so we have a motion to rezone?
It's to amend the future land use map.
Which is Resolution B.
Oh, you all are looking, okay, I'm sorry.
There are three parts, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Which we only have to do two. If it was to be...
We do all three?
Right, we have to do all three.
What, Resolution A is a denial. We're not going to do that. Move, two, move the zoning, move, excuse me, move the future land use map, move the ordinance.
The zoning and then the resolution for the conditional use permit.
So two.
Three. Flume, future land use, rezoning, conditional use permit.
Okay, where the confusion was, is you all were looking on this.
There's a third resolution, three resolutions on our plate.
That's true, yes.
Four resolutions, got it, thank you.
So let's approve all four of them.
So this is Resolution B.
Right, correct. A resolution amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan 2013 through 2030 for a certain area located at 1306, Laxton Road, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. No further discussion. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes five with one no and one absent. All right, next is the motion to rezone approximately 5.91 acres, located at 1306 Laxton Road, from R1 low-density residential to R3C medium-density residential. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, is the ordinance as presented second?
Motion has been made and second. Councilmember Perro, further discussion?
I'd like to add a little color to this, please. As I mentioned to council during roll call, I think that we have a problem in our city zoning ordinance. I think the sitting, the city zoning ordinance is effectively a policy prohibiting single-family development, or a single R1 development. We need, I would ask that we look at our R1 development strategy. I want to understand whether the city is promoting R1 or not, because what I understand is that the requirements for single-family development in the city, subdivision and, and development in the city, is so onerous. The requirements for the road, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, the streetlights, and maybe I'm missing something, or maybe I've added something too much, Mr. Martin, that those requirements are cost prohibitive when you're trying to develop in a single-family neighborhood. Now, if this council is supportive of single-family neighborhoods, we need to make sure that our policy via zoning is supportive of it the same way. I know that when we redid the zoning ordinance, that we were looking to densify in certain areas, but we shouldn't, shouldn't exclude or prohibit single-family by pricing them out of the market in essence. So what I'm requesting is that we have a briefing and a work session so that we understand that. I would hope that some of the developers that are engaged in this sort of work in the area would comment. I would love to see this area as an R1, but I just don't think it's feasible to do under our current, current zoning status. And I've been hearing this more and more, so if we could take a look at it, and I just want to make sure that our zoning ordinances are consistent with what council understands as their, as our policy for development. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And the motion was seconded by Councilmember Wright. Do you have any further discussion? All right, any further, Councilmember Higgleston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when this first came up, I mentioned a few other alternatives, and I recognize our, our one zoning ordinance, I think another item is setbacks and the requirements for separation and whatnot. And what could be done is like a planned unit development, where they can change the lines and, and still have it, single-family homes as opposed to, you know, dense townhomes. And as, as we, I think our zoning ordinance obviously has to be changed, because, you know, when you look at how we're, I don't think dense, making density such an issue helps with the city. I remember, I think I mentioned this a long time ago, but reading a book by Daniel Boone, and he discovered Kentucky because of the fact that it was too dense, and how dense to him was seeing the smoke from his neighbor's chimney. So he left Virginia and went to Kentucky. And, you know, I, I think having some elbow room is good for a city. I think it's, it's, it's helpful, and so if every parcel that we have that is currently zoned for R1, I appreciate the private property rights of the property owner, but we also have to appreciate the property rights on the neighbor who bought it as an R1. And so with that, there's going to be lots of more things that are coming up before us. You know, and I look at Laxton Road coming into Timberlake. It's the exact same problem that we've spent a lot of money, fortunately fixed now, coming off of 501 up by Ward Ferry Road, where you have a, you come off the road, you go up and you turn, and there's another light, it's the same exact thing right up here at Laxton. You go up, and then there's Greenview Drive, and it doesn't quite back up, so you get a lot of, of, you know, a lot of queuing and a lot of things that back up. And so with that, adding more, I don't know is going to be the, the best solution. I appreciate the developer is, is, is listening to the things that you stated, that he did lower the density from 50 down to 40, appreciate the fact of having another way in and out, which is great from an emergency standpoint, it's great from lots of other items that you mentioned. But I just, I really think, and I realize this is going to pass, but, you know, we really do need to make sure we protect the single-family neighborhoods. And I don't, you know, Mr. Wright, I don't believe that we have not enough houses. There's so many houses that could be fixed up, that are kind of vacant, and, you know, down, driven around a lot downtown, and you see some neighborhoods that really could use a shot in the arm. And if we constantly build new stuff, the old stuff never gets that shot in the arm, because money's going to flow to the stuff that's already done. So I'd really kind of like to see us value our current inventory, and we value our current inventory by not flooding the market with new inventory. And that allows for some of these houses, for people to say, you know, I'm going to go down there and fix this rascal up and live there, you know, so for people that want to come. So I just, I'm, I've been on council a long time, and I've seen more and more apartments, and lots of these, we don't have say on. They happen because it's already zoned R4. And so they get to build it by right, and there's lots of them that are being built by right, right now, so.
Any further discussion? I would like to say to follow up with that, I think, not for tonight, but just for our city manager, to add this item to our retreat in the near future topics as far as how we develop, because there are, and I would echo, a lot of apartments on, and, and townhomes on the other side, on Timberlake's side. And so I think it's just merited to have a, warranted to have a conversation about open areas in our city, about what Councilmember Perro said. And so I'd like to just make it the mention here now that we want to add that to our retreat list. All right, Councilmember Wright? I'm sorry? All right, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just thank Councilmember Higgleston for, for pointing out that, you know, a lot of our neighborhoods do need real care. A lot of our single-family neighborhoods need some care, and so I look forward to partnering with him and other members on council to provide those incentives to historically underprivileged and underserved neighborhoods and rehabbing existing stock. So I'm, I'm excited to partner with him on that.
And I just want to follow up too with you, because we characterize neighborhoods that need a little shot in the arm as being maybe the lower income or some older units. But we have just regular neighborhoods that have an older generation that's retiring out, and there are a lot of single-family brick ranch homes. When I drive through neighborhoods that need some tender TLC. And so I just kind of want to look across the city at, not just in our, in our core urban neighborhoods we're developing as needed, but also in some of just our older, uh, single-family homes that are in the Timberlake area, our Boonsborough area. If you ride through several area neighborhoods of our town, it's, it's more than just the core neighborhoods. It extends out, and so between like even some in Fort Hill area, coming down Fort Avenue area, Memorial Avenue. So I think just the conversation of in general, how do we incentivize and/or encourage the development throughout the city for some of our older neighborhoods as well? All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes five with one no and one absent. Thank you. Next is the motion, is there a motion for a conditional use permit to allow the development of the property as 40 townhomes? Councilmember Perro?
Yes, ma'am. I move the resolution with one caveat on item number, on, on item two of the resolution, that we add all requirements of the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, and add, and the city of Lynchburg, for access shall be met prior to the site plan approval. And Mr. Martin, does that fulfill the, the statement that you made earlier?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I would like to make the resolution with that minor change, the assertion of, and the city of Lynchburg in that specific location under item two of the resolution.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
I just want to say that, that Councilmember Higgleston, although we disagree on the specific issue, I agree with you on the broader concept. Ward three specifically has seen a significant amount of, of apartment development, Ward four to a slightly lesser extent. And I agree with the point you make. I just don't think it applies necessarily to this specific parcel, but overall, you were exactly right, sir.
All right, Councilmember Wilder?
I'm with Councilmember Perro. And also, I've made several comments about so many apartments and townhouses in our community, and also a question about why there's so few single-family houses. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion. I'm looking forward to looking at, is also how we as a community can also work in our, in our, in the city areas with areas that need to be redeveloped or meet some more 10 loving care. So I'm looking forward to the discussion, see how we as a community can address those issues. I think it's a discussion definitely needed to have, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Higgleston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's one other item that needs to be corrected on here. Mr. Martin, as I'm looking at the resolution, unless it's a different one, the CUP, it does have the, still the 50-unit townhome development. I thought that was supposed to be, an offer to be lowered to 40.
Resolution C?
Not Resolution C, it's the resolution with the conditional use permit.
The one I'm looking at says 40-unit townhome.
We do not have that, so I would accept that as a friendly amendment, if that's all right, sir.
Not, I guess that's just a correction is what it should be, I think, because I think they talked about the 40.
I'm not sure why you don't have it, but it was prepared. It should be 40.
The, the bottom of it says page, or it says 143K. It says the conditional use permit to allow construction of 50.
Oh, interesting.
And then 50 in...
I don't have a Resolution C.
It's not Resolution C, it's the CUP resolution.
Okay, we seem to have a little discrepancy in the source of the data that we have. I'm looking at Granicus. I think some other council members are looking at the Dropbox. And there is a Resolution C. Mine is not labeled as Resolution C. The intent of my motion, oh, interesting, you are in Granicus. Is Resolution C as presented, which is not in front of me. With the, with the amendment number two that I, I said about adding the city count, the city of Lynchburg. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Which is showing as Resolution C.
I don't have that.
So, so...
It should be 08, 084R.
Granicus.
And I'm in Dropbox.
I'm in Dropbox.
And so you see the 50.
Uh-uh, we see the... We see 40. Right, we see the 40.
I see 50. The intent is 40.
Let me clean my glasses, then it'll work.
Yeah, maybe I need reading glasses, but the intent is 40.
So the intent is 40.
We're saying the 40, okay. All right, so...
I think I understand. Both he and I had scrolled through the entire piece, and those are the old resolutions from the last meeting that we were referencing. I see Resolution C now.
All right.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, so we have the motion with the addition of the city of Lynchburg to number two on that motion, and we had a second, so we're prepared to vote. Thank you. And the motion passes five with one no and one absent. All right, thank you very much, and your projects passed. Thank you. All right, next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund operating budget and the fiscal year 2020 schools operating budget, and rescind $862,000 from the schools' operating appropriation and increase the general fund unassigned fund balance by $862,000. And staff will provide a brief summary, and this is Ms. Witt.
After the FY 2020 budget was passed, Lynchburg City School staff identified some differences between the FY 2020 budget projections and the current budget that resulted in an overestimation of funds needed to support salary increases and living wage adjustments for Lynchburg City School staff. As a result of this finding, the superintendent has communicated to city council the additional appropriation of $862,000 is not needed and should be returned to the city.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Witt. Is there a motion for a discussion, action?
Madam Mayor, I move that the, sorry, I'm not on the motion itself, but I would certainly move that the, the, that the money be placed back into the general fund unassigned balance.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded, and there's no further discussion from either of you?
Yeah.
I'll defer to you.
Okay, Councilmember Higgleston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I greatly appreciate this. You know, I know we had lots of discussion about this not too terribly long ago. And, and, you know, I recognize there's, some people are going to be, you know, somewhat embarrassed and whatnot. But I do want to applaud our, our school superintendent. But I do want to applaud our, our school superintendent. You know, when, when you think about the magnitude and the enormity of this, I really can't think of if this has ever happened before in any public school in the entire United States. I mean, I mean, I recognize it's, oh yeah, we're giving some money back, but I, I really, I don't know if they've ever done this before. You know, you just got an allocation that is approved, and our superintendent said, hey, we got plenty, give it back. That says a heck of a lot about our superintendent, and I am very thankful that we have a superintendent that saw this discrepancy, acted upon it, didn't do what maybe others could have done in the past, and said, hey, we'll kind of use it later. She had ethics and integrity and came forward and said, we don't need it, we're giving it back. You know, I mean, it's, it's really mind-boggling when you again try to look across the whole United States and see if there's ever anybody that said, hey, we got too much money. I mean, nobody ever says that. And she said it, and that's to be very well applauded. You know, with that going forward, I know we've interviewed some new school board candidates. I really hope this, this charge is lit a fire under our school board and our new school board candidates that say, we got to ask these questions. Sometimes questions are asked, and somebody gives a pat answer or a little silly answer. Press it. Because of the fact that when our schools are doing well, our city does well. And we can't just keep on doing well by giving more and more money to our schools, raising taxes, giving more money to our schools, and hurting our city. So this is a great thing, and I, and I, and I think this should empower our school board members. We have some sitting here today, and hopefully some of them are listening at home. I hope this empowers them to say, when these things come up, ask those questions, because you're going to be happy that you did after. You're not going to be happy if you don't. I recognize it's a difficult task, it's a $110 million budget, which is a lot of money. And so I am very delighted that they're sending it back. We greatly appreciate that, and I hope as the years progress, that you, you, sometimes I realize it's easy to get involved in the minutia of the this versus that, but when we see loss of students, and loss of students, and loss of students, and more employees, and more cost, eventually we've got to sit back and say, this isn't probably right. And so ask questions, and I hope you all are empowered to really get up there and ask and make sure, because this matters. When we, when we hold our schools accountable, we all win. When we don't, we all lose. So I'm very thankful that Dr. Edwards is, is returning this, and happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and I want to thank Ms. Evans and Dr. Brennan for, for joining us here this evening from the school board. And I, I agree, I think it's, you know, I, worth, worth applauding the superintendent and the school board for returning funds if they find that they don't need them. So I think that that's entirely appropriate, it's right. My, I think, objection to the, to the motion on the table is that I don't think that the funds should necessarily go back to the general fund unassigned fund balance. I understand that would bring the fund balance up to, what, 10.4% over city council policy for the fund balance, which is 10%. Given the needs in our community, and some are listed here, so for example, the city manager has provided a list of, of items that she would recommend, or she, is recommend the right word? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Options or options?
Options, alternatives, yes, thank you.
Recommended was back to the general fund.
Yeah, right, right, fair enough. So, so these are options, to restore 20,000 to communications and marketing, 24,325 for the council manager budget for the Virginia Municipal League, National League of Cities, and the UVA Institute for Government. Sorry, that includes an additional 6,110 dollars and additional 2,500 dollars. And I would be supportive of restoring those funds. I would also be supportive of adding an additional $2,000, as was requested by Virginia Cooperative Extension, which is not listed here. I'm adding it as an alternative. I think that brings it to around 55,000, the remainder of which, I would propose, I guess in a substitute motion, be, be put into, as, as was outlined in policy, to supplement pay-as-you-go capital outlay expenditures. And the reason for this is because if we were to return it to the unassigned fund balance, it might accrue interest, but that interest might not equal the amount that we would otherwise pay in debt service. Right? So if we earn, let's say, 3% or 2.5% interest on this money going, that's sitting in the fund reserve, we might be paying 4%, 4.5% for that equivalent level of debt. So it seems to me that that would be a more prudent expenditure of funds. However, I understand that obviously there's some folks on council who are concerned about the fund balance and think it is frankly too low. And if we're going to, I'm, I'm agnostic on that question. I'm certainly happy to have a conversation, would welcome the conversation, in fact, ask that we do so if council's in agreement, later this year, that we have a conversation, a full one, I think it's, might even be on the agenda for the retreat, to have, you know, outline, should we be updating the policy and raising that number? You know, if there are sound reasons for doing so, and we know what the costs are, and we know what the benefits, sorry, the, yeah, the benefits and costs would be of our taking that action, then I'd, I'd welcome it, but I think we should have that full conversation first, and not just assign money into a pot for no good reason, aside from it, it exists, the general fund exists, and the unassigned fund balance. There's no real logic to it, we don't know what the benefits necessarily going to be, and so why not use it for pay-as-you-go right now, when we know that we have the need, and it's going to save us from paying tens of thousands of dollars a year in debt service down the road? So I think the financially prudent decision here would be to, to move it towards a pay-as-you-go. So I'm going to make that as a substitute motion, that we endorse the 55,000 or so, including $2,000 for the Virginia Cooperative Extension, and move the addition, the remaining balance, about a little over $800,000, into pay-as-you-go capital outlay expenditures.
Thank you. Is there a second on a substitute motion? Is there a second on a substitute motion? Second? I'm going to second the substitute motion. For the discussion outlined there, first, I want to say thank you, as Councilmember Helgason said, to the superintendent, but also to the leadership of the school board, because both came in during the same time, new leadership of chair and a vice chair combination, and the superintendent, as well as the superintendent having said from day one, she would be transparent when she came in on last year's budget. And this has been a, a different budget year in a sense, I think. A couple of councilmembers met with city staff on the budget prior to, or as it was being developed, to come through to council. Also, the superintendent and board leadership took the time to meet separately additionally with council members. So the charge that council has put before the schools began last year, really, before the superintendent came, she came in on the end of it, but also the new leadership, they took to heart what council members were saying. And so they did continue to question even after the appropriation was made. So to that, I commend the leadership on the school board, as well as, school board members that are present, thank you, continue to ask questions, but that's what we asked you to do throughout the entire process of this budget year, and so you did that. And then I, I do support council members' rights, request, to have the continued discussion about what does it mean to save and how we save, and then to appropriate this additional funding, which we, was cut, the city manager did her due diligence in that piece, and because it has come back to support that. So that's why I've seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Helgason, followed by Councilmember Perro?
I guess we're speaking on the, the substitute motion?
The substitute motion, yes.
Did you want to speak on the, since I've already, I guess I spoke on the main motion, but.
Yes, substitute.
The, the substitute motion, again, I, I can appreciate the desire, but if, if we've learned nothing, let's not knee-jerk react, spend money. I do not support this. There are some different solutions that we could say, hey, let's spend the money here and there. Hopefully, I thought we've learned something. You know, if we haven't, that's not a good thing. The general fund is a 10% minimum. This budget proposed having a little more of a cushion, because you remember that we've had storms, we've had things that happen unintentionally, that's why we have the ability to utilize extra funds. If the money needs to come out at a later time, we should have a thoughtful debate on where that extra money goes, you know, starting with, it came from the increased tax on our, our city taxpayers to, to begin with. But we should have a thoughtful debate, not just saying, hey, we'll take the money, but let's also spend it as soon as we get it. Let's put the money in the general fund, let's not go down this path again. Hopefully, we learned something. I think we could read all our minutes and, and hear the discussion that was had just a few months ago, and the warning, let's not go down that path again. Let's, let's take the money back, say thank you, and at a later time, if we have some different ideas, we can do those at, as they merit, but not just spending it today. So I will not be supporting the substitute motion.
Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting the substitute motion either, as, as we all recall, the city manager recommended a 10.4% fund balance. The purpose of that fund balance was to, was to improve our overall, our overall fund balance, and is, that is, as that is the one shortcoming that we seem to have, and as far as reaching a AAA bond rating. This is a rising rate environment. Debt service, as we partake under these additional capital projects, our debt service is going to get more and more expensive. Whatever we can do to, to increase our, our bond rating, will certainly decrease our overall expenses in the future. And yes, you're, you're correct about your point, Mr. Wright, about, about the interest rates and the discrepancy between the interest rates. We'll be looking at negative arbitrage for one year. However, in the next, in that next year, all of the money that is reserved for fund balance will go to pay-as-you-go capital after, after that, and then we'll reserve another 10-point, hopefully more than 10%, in the following budget year. So that pay-as-you-go capital will help bolster the city's capital needs going forward. I'm getting bad looks from Ms. Fitz. Is that correct, Ms. Fitz, or did I misinterpret it, something?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that as a frown. I've, I've, I've learned to recognize some glances from the city staff and wonder if I'm treading on thin ice or not, and the last thing I want to do is provide inaccurate data. So thank you for making sure I am providing accurate information. So that, I am willing to take the negative arbitrage in, in an effort to use, to save that money and to apply it to, to pay-as-you-go work in the following year. So that's, that's what we need to do, and I'm going to support, I am not going to support the substitute motion. I believe that we need to save this, we, is what the initial intent of the budget was, and I would support a longer discussion or more detailed budget discussion than, than an immediate reaction as we're discussing now. Thank you.
Just one thing, I think that she and I were both kind of grimacing our eyebrows.
That's what I saw, maybe.
I don't believe there is any negative arbitrage, because of the fact that this is cash, our interest rates are increasing, and our interest, income is increased. We just had a finance committee meeting a couple weeks ago, that all of our revenue, our interest revenue is up because of rising interest rates. This money that is sitting there, it's not going to be bonded, so I mean, we're not taking out new bonds and letting it sit there at, at any time within the next couple weeks. And then secondly, if you spend the money, you really lose.
That's true.
So I mean, you, I mean, if you spend it on some of whatever those things, I don't even have the list of the different items to spend it, you lose 100% of the money you spent, so.
I was referring to the difference between our.
In the future.
Interest expense versus our interest income.
Yeah, if we had to get, if we had to issue bonds later, yes.
What is that?
But we're not in a.
We're not in an arbitrage situation. Not yet. It's close, but not yet.
Oh, well then. Thank you. That's the frown.
Yeah, that was, that's what we're.
I appreciate it very much.
Councilmember Wilder, followed by Councilmember Nelson, I think.
Again, I appreciate Councilmember Wright's proposal. I'm not prepared to support that today. I'm still reviewing all the different facts of everything. I do support some of those, some of the actions, not all of them, so I'm really not prepared to, to support the whole motion. So I'd rather have the funds go to the fund balance at this moment, than maybe discuss that later time period. I do want to commend our superintendent for the work she has done in our school system. And I know, I was on the school board for nine years, I understand it's a challenging job, I mean, looking at a $100,000 budget, and, and, this is a challenging position. So I appreciate her in diving into the numbers and answering the right questions. But again, I would commend the school board for hiring her, for the insight that she has. I trust the school board, I trust their decisions. I'm thankful that we do have a good school system, we have a great school system, and that we continue to make it even better for all the citizens of our community. So I support the school system, but not this particular event.
And the school, the school budget has really grown since you've been there. It used to be 100,000, you're there, it's 100 million now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going to 100 million, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I just.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to get back to my.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not disagree with Councilmember Wright. His logic is good, and his facts certainly are good at this point, but, and based on what the motion is, 55,000 of that 862 would go to miscellaneous items that are listed in option six, five and six, and the rest presumptively would go to the engineering and designing of the police station, which funds we would normally have to borrow, therefore makes more sense to use funds that don't have interest on them than funds that would have an interest rate tacked to it if we had to borrow those. However, as Councilmember Helgason, Perro, and Wilder have said, at this point, we are dealing with a lot of issues right now, and I, it would be my preference to put these funds back where they came from, into the fund balance, and if we want at some point to discuss the merits of all of these in a conscientious and detailed way, we could pull that out of the fund balance and use it as a pay capital item, or any assorted types of expenditures, just as we pulled it out, or the majority of us pulled it out and gave it to the school division. So it allows us the flexibility to address this at a later time, when we can weigh into it much more deeply.
All right. Any further, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it seems like I'm going to lose the vote anyway, but I appreciate the conversation among, among council. Certainly, I feel strongly that if we're going to increase the unassigned fund balance, we really ought to know why we're doing it, and we really ought to have a plan for where we're going. It shouldn't just be, I, I don't think, putting money in there and hoping that the credit rating agencies somehow decide that that's, that tips the balance and gives us a AAA. I mean, there are so many other factors that they look at in addition to fund balance, and I don't think $860,000 is going to tip that scale. I appreciate what some people have said, that, you know, we, if we keep doing it in drips and drabs, maybe we'll get there one day, and that's, that's all well and good, but I do think we really ought to have a plan, and we should know why we're doing it, and there should be a strategic objective. Absent that, I'm not in support of putting money in there when the policy does not call for it, so I'm not going to withdraw the, the motion, I'm going to let it stand, and we can vote it down. How about that?
All right, is there anything? Councilmember Helgason?
Just one quick thing, is, is, I realize this 862,000 isn't quite enough, so school board, if you want to give us back about 5 million that we can add on top of that, I think we'd be happy, so, just as, as, as a challenge. Then that would be, make you happy.
I'll take.
Anyway, good, okay.
So we're voting on the.
We're voting on the substitute motion, yes. Okay. And the motion loses, two yes and four no, with one absent, so, thank you. All right, now, there is a, yes, the original motion on the floor, to appropriate all of the funding back to the 800, back to the fund balance, 862,000. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
I would just like to further comment, I know we've heard this.
I would just like to further comment, I know we've heard this a number of times, I was talking specifically about the substitute motion, but I would like to echo the commendation to the superintendent and the school board, it, you know, it's a matter of principle and integrity, and I very much appreciate it, and I won't say anymore. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, where are we at, five, one, and one, thank you, counting the lights. All right, thank you. Consideration of adopting a resolution, re-adopting City Council's rules of procedure, which contain council's schedule of regular meetings and work sessions for the upcoming year. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests, Mr. Irwin.
This is something that City Council routinely does this time of year, the state code requires that each year the governing body has to approve its schedule of meetings for the upcoming year, and the City Council's schedule of meetings is set forth in its rules of procedure, so we, so that no one will complain, we're not doing what the state code says to do. Each year, we re-adopt our rules of procedure, which establishes the schedule of meetings and what happens if a meeting is postponed because of a disaster, to make sure we're in compliance with the state code.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the rules of procedure?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wright, Perro?
All right.
And the motion passes six with one absence, thank you. Next, I'm going to bring back into general business the B that we removed earlier, consideration of adopting the resolution, Regulation nineteen dash zero four six regarding the City of Lynchburg substantial amendment number one to the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program year 2018, fiscal year 2019, annual action plan to add a new project utilizing unspent Bluff Walk section 108 loan proceeds totaling one point two, one million two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the design of the new Lynchburg Police Department Headquarters. All right, and Councilmember Hegelson?
I guess just make sure, you know, I guess as was stated, that this wasn't in here, so we didn't have anything, I remember it, I was here, but I don't remember to the detail, so was this originally the one million, and we were going to re-advertise the extra two hundred thousand, or is this the one point two five million, and we're going to advertise still another two hundred thousand? So what's, where's?
So the total amount in the Bluff Walk refunding was one point.
Six or something.
One point six.
Okay.
And it is proposed that the one point two five goes into the Police Department Headquarters design, and the balance goes to affordable housing with specifics to be determined at a later date.
And so that's, okay.
After your discussion at your meeting on June eleventh, you asked that we bring back the portion that is allocated to affordable housing to be considered to be added to the Police Department Headquarters design, and that is where I thought Councilmember Nelson wanted us to notify the Community Development Advisory Committee to make sure that they were on board, or if they had any comments regarding that portion.
So does it, this is the first amount that we discussed without the extra two hundred thousand?
Correct.
Going to, because that's been advertised, though, right? So that's begun.
It has not been advertised, the additional funding has not been advertised.
Okay.
Only this, only this amount has been advertised, and the public hearing was held, and you considered it and approved it.
Okay, the small portion.
And this is the second reading.
Okay. And so that is still going forward, what we talked about, the extra two hundred thousand is supposed to be being spent on housing study, it's actually going to be utilized for the, that we voted on, to utilize that to be advertised for the police.
We're going to bring that back after we go through the advertisement period.
Yes, gotcha.
Have the public hearing and make sure that CDAC is apprised of the public hearing, so they may have a voice in that.
And so that, that has not been advertised as of yet?
Correct.
But it's going to be shortly?
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
I don't feel like I should make a motion on this, because I wasn't here for the first reading, I'm just going to ask you a question, is this what you've explained consistent with the first reading?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
It's consistent with the first reading, and then we had some changes, I guess, in the meeting, that you weren't here for the second portion of it, so. And that's forthcoming, so that has, this has nothing to do with that, gotcha, so I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made in second, Councilmember Hegelson?
No, just the fact that it's, I'm going to obviously vote for it, obviously clears up when we have the stuff in the packet and it doesn't come here like an hour before, so we can actually see what it is, so, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
No additional comments.
All right, thank you. If there is no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes six with one absence, thank you. Next is consideration of a closed meeting to consider appointments for Lynchburg City School Board, the steering committee members to the Task Force on the Future of Education, pre-K through twelve and beyond, as well as appointments to the following boards, commissions or committees, Central Virginia Community College Board, and Youth Services Citizens Board pursuant to Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia. And B, consideration of a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the city managers and the city attorney's performance evaluations pursuant to Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A, one of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, the motion has been made, second it, please.
Madam.
Discussion?
Madam Clark.
Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six with one absence, thank you. We are now in closed session.